Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the November 19th, 2015 meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning Commission, and at this time ask everyone to silence electronic devices, phones, if you're on a laptop, please turn off the volume, anything that could beep or interrupt our musings. Heather, would you please call the roll?
Tom Grinstad.
Here.
Jeff Brown.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Ali Taishi.
Here.
Phyllis McKee.
Here.
Steve Crooks.
Here.
It's good to see some people in the audience. We've got a lot of people here. We've got two sets of minutes to approve, October 8th and October 17th minutes. Those were sent out to the commission by Heather. I'm assuming everyone's reviewed them. If there's no comments, we can just approve both sets of minutes with a head nod from everyone unless someone would like to comment on them. Is there any comments? Fine. Okay. Minutes are approved. We'll have a public comment period at this time. At the beginning of our meeting, we always do this. This is an opportunity for anyone here to talk about anything other than the topic of tonight's meeting. The topic of tonight's meeting is the ADU accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So if you want to talk about the accessory dwelling unit ordinance tonight, do not come up now to speak. This is for other topics. And you can come up to the mic, introduce yourself, state your address, and speak for three minutes about whatever you'd like. Is there anybody who would like to speak about anything other than the ADU ordinance tonight? Yes? Come on down. So please state your name and address at the podium. And Chris, can you help get the mic? Is the mic? There it is. And then you can speak to us for three minutes about your topic.
Okay. This is my first time at one of these things, so I'm not quite sure if I'm doing this right. But I'm Bryn Hirschfeld, and I am part of a team called The Cutting Board, and we are trying to essentially build Bellingham's community through food. So we are -- have an idea to have a community incubator, a culinary incubator within the Leonard Streets or the York District of Bellingham. So this would essentially be a certified kitchen that would be surrounded by a small community garden, and we would love to teach, you know, have workshops, have up-and-coming chefs present their food, and to have community potlucks. And essentially, you know, we would like to bring people in from, you know, all the walks of Bellingham to come and sit down and have a meal. So essentially, I am here to see what Bellingham thinks of this, and if this is essentially possible, and if there is any, essentially, a place for us in Bellingham. Yes.
Thank you. I would encourage you to speak to your neighborhood association.
Okay.
Where you're talking about this, and also speak to the City of Bellingham Planning Department.
Okay.
Directly, and they're downstairs in this building.
Okay.
And they can give you feedback on zoning and things that could impact that idea.
Okay.
So if you're interested in pursuing, I would encourage you to speak to those folks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment period and move into our work session tonight. And the work session tonight is going to be on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and we're going to provide an opportunity for public comment. I've got the signup sheet. If you didn't sign up, you can still have an opportunity to comment. We're going to do that after staff presentation, and the commission has a chance to ask clarifying questions to staff, and then we'll allow some public comment, and then we'll have a discussion after that as a group. And this is a work session. I think Greg's going to maybe talk a little bit about where we're at in the process and where we're going with this. But this is the very first real work session we're having on it, so there will be other opportunities down the road for public comment in this process. We'll have a public hearing at a later date, and I want everyone to be aware of that, that this is not your only opportunity to comment. And because it is a work session and our focus is on discussing this as a commission, we're going to limit public comment to three minutes. I'm going to be timing that, and I'd really ask everyone, when you do come up to comment later, to be cognizant of that time. There's a lot of people here. We have a lot of work to do, and please limit your comments to that three-minute, and listen for the buzzer. I'll give you a 30-second warning. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Greg. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Greg Ockett, Bellingham Planning and Community Development Department. With me tonight is Chris Cook, who amongst our staff probably has the most experience with our current ADU regulations, and so he's here to help us tonight. And we have been out talking with members of the community with various groups about the ADU ordinance, and tonight is an opportunity for the commission to join that conversation. And it is just a conversation at this point. We don't have a proposal for any changes to the ordinance at this point. We're still in the listening phase, and we want to hear what you all have to say and what you think about the issues associated with ADUs in Bellingham. As the chair mentioned, we will, once tonight's meeting's completed, we'll spend some time pondering what we've heard and what we've learned, and we'll bring back recommendations for potential changes to the ADU ordinance, probably in the spring, maybe sooner, depending on the scope of the changes that we're -- that we might propose. But we want to take our time with this, and so we're not in any hurry to get this done. We want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to find out about what's going on, and an opportunity to participate in the review process, both with the Planning Commission, and then ultimately with the City Council, who makes the final decisions on any code changes. And so what I thought I would do is just briefly go over the matrix that was included in your packet. This is a summary of many of the comments that we've heard over these last few months, and then includes some staff comments, the way we handle things currently under our existing codes. And so I thought I would run through that and just hit the high points really quickly, and then we can go on to questions, discussion, and thoughts from the folks that are here. We started with, well, let me back up. The focus group, we put together a focus group to help us gather information and provide feedback on what's working, what's not working about our current ADU rules, what's the situation in Bellingham. And we wanted to both identify the potential benefits of allowing ADUs and also the concerns that they raise. And so this matrix does that. It starts with the, what we called, opportunities with ADUs, and it highlights a number of those that were identified by the focus group. And then we'll talk in a minute about the concerns that were raised as well. And there are quite a few, obviously. ADUs in general can provide a form of housing that can be affordable, can be a benefit both to the property owner and the person who lives in the ADU, or the people who live in the ADU, provides housing choice. Currently, we, there are a number of areas where we allow both attached and detached ADUs, and we can get into the specifics of that if you like. There is a financial benefit to the homeowner, and let's be clear, the homeowner has to live on-site under our current rules. That's an important component. So it can provide a financial benefit to the homeowner, allow people to stay in their homes, help with mortgage payments and so on. As I said, it can be affordable housing, and it is generally classified as infill housing. So all the benefits of infill in terms of using our existing infrastructure and being close to jobs and services and parks and trails all come with, or can come with, ADU housing. There can be a caretaker function if either the person, a person living in the ADU or a person living in the house, needs a caretaker. That function can be provided by an on-site person. It does provide for jobs for builders, obviously, building ADUs. It can provide housing, again, in a location close to jobs and services where parking may not be needed, off-street parking may not be needed, and we'll talk more about parking, And ADUs provide a fiscal benefit for the city, as I mentioned. It'll, in general, uses existing infrastructure. We don't have to build new roads or install new sewer lines to serve infill development or to serve ADUs, and so that's a nice thing, a benefit for the city. In terms of concerns, I'm on page six now of the matrix. Illegal units is probably the concern that we've spent the most time on, talking about, and you undoubtedly hear some of that tonight. We recognize that there are a number of illegal units out there, and we're working on that. And our new rental registration program, we believe, is a step in the right direction in terms of identifying and correcting illegal or unsafe units. Impacts on neighborhood character is a concern that we've heard a lot, and you'll see the matrix spends quite a bit of time on a number of issues associated with neighborhood character in terms of having a number of these ADUs within a specific area. The location on the lot of an ADU may have impacts on adjacent property owners. Architectural standards and ADUs that may or may not reflect the character of not only the house that's on the site, but the neighborhood in general. Height limits, mass and bulk, again, depending on where an ADU is located on a lot or where a detached ADU is located on a lot, it may have impacts on neighbors in terms of the building height and the size of the unit, the mass and the bulk. Parking issues, as one of our focus group members said, parking, parking, parking. And we heard a lot about parking issues. There's a concern, again, related to neighborhood character, and that's just putting more people in neighborhoods. ADUs obviously allow more people to live in a neighborhood than would otherwise be permitted, and that can have its own set of challenges. Design issues, again, size and scale, shadow effects on solar and gardening on adjacent properties, we heard about those concerns. Loss of open space, loss of recreation space on lots if we were to allow detached ADUs may reduce the yard space for children to play in. ADUs can increase the impervious surfaces on a lot. Obviously, if you have a second building, you have less ground area to absorb water. ADUs can be fairly expensive to build, and that's one of the concerns that we heard with the permitting requirements and the impact fee payments and so forth. It can be fairly expensive to build an ADU, and that's been a daunting thing for some folks who've wanted to do this. The concern about these units becoming short-term rentals or vacation rentals is another concern that we heard. And then we had what we call a technical group, which was a group of local architects and designers, look through our current codes and identify issues that they've had or recommendations that they would like us to consider for changes to our existing code. And those recommendations take up the last three or four pages of the matrix. I'm not going to go through those individually. We can respond to questions if you have them, and actually, Tom Grinstad participated in that, so he can give you a flavor of the discussion as well. So that's a summary of the things that we've heard, talking with various groups and individuals around the community. And we want to, again, invite the commission to join the conversation tonight. If there are issues that you think we should especially address in any changes that we propose to the ordinance, now's the time to identify those for us. As you can see, we've got a fairly extensive list already. And if you have any other thoughts about ADUs in general and the direction that we should be heading, or not, we'd be happy to make note of those tonight. And then we, as I said, we will go away and ponder everything that we've heard and everything that we've learned, and come back to you probably in the spring with a proposal for a new ADU ordinance or readoption of the one we have. So I want to emphasize that this is the middle of the process. There'll be future opportunities when there's something concrete for people to look at, to comment on, and for you folks as well to do the same, and ultimately then the City Council. So with that, as I said, the primary purpose tonight is to let you folks talk about this and discuss it, and so we'll respond to questions, but we'll try and be quiet and just listen tonight.
Thank you, Greg. See if anyone on the commission has any initial questions. Give everybody a chance to ask a question or two of staff, and then maybe get some feedback from the public before we dig into it. Is that okay? Jeff?
Well, I don't think it's particularly astute of me to note that part of the discussion of ADUs is poisoned by the topic of past or historical patterns of enforcement and future expectations for enforcement. So it might be useful if, Greg, you could, I guess, give a little bit of a background on what enforcement's been today, you know, in terms of not just the Landlord Licensing Act, but the zoning violations of having additional units in the past, and how you've managed that, and how you would expect that to be different under any rules that are adopted as part of an ADU ordinance. I think that would just help the audience and us in general to help figure out what's going on in terms of that.
That's a good question.
So as far as the enforcement goes, we have received complaints about illegal units. We basically refer those to our enforcement officer, and they will go out and investigate and basically enforce on it. Many cases go out and inspect and ensure that it is, the use is abated. Many of these, because we have a lot of enforcement cases, come down to prioritization, life, health, safety, welfare. And so I can't say that we have been, and with limited staff, we haven't been able to enforce to the ability that we have wanted to in the past. With the rental registration program that's coming online here, we are getting those resources, that we will have the ability to conduct the site visits, the investigations, and look into this much more thoroughly.
So I guess, from what I understand, some of the reluctance in the past for enforcement is actually two parts. One is it's complaint-driven, so basically you need a neighbor or somebody else to initiate something.
Right.
Which has its own problems versus city staff actively observing and coming up with a methodology for monitoring what's going on. But the other issue is, that I understand has been a consideration in the past, is, you know, if you go out and red-tag somebody's resident, the tenant's out on the street. Just, I mean, if it is actually an illegal unit, you're going to put somebody on the street, and there's been a bit of resistance to do that. And I guess I can understand that. But again, I look at where we are, and I look at the history of what enforcement's been, and I, as much as I like the concept of ADUs, I fully understand the frustration with it. So I guess any light that you can shed on how that might be changing as part of this discussion would be very useful.
It would probably be most useful for us to have the staff that's working on the rental registration program come and talk to you about it. I know the basics. Every unit is supposed to be inspected once every three years. They're looking for life, safety issues. All units have to be registered with the city, and so I think there's about 18,000 units that have been registered. I think that was the last number I heard. And they're supposed to be inspected on a regular basis, and that will help identify life, safety issues. And then if there's a question about the legality of the unit, that's the city out, I guess, looking for some of these situations that aren't legal, rather than relying on neighbors to let us know when they have a concern. So that's, I think, the biggest change with rental registration, is that the city will be more proactive in looking for units that are unsafe and units that are illegal.
I'd add that we have been developing procedures when it comes to the issue of displacement of tenants, because that is huge. And virtually, the majority of the cases, the tenant is the victim of this. And so we are looking at procedures that would minimize impacts to the tenant, identifying where, you know, funding may be available, being able to direct them to resources, to help with relocation, working with other agencies, including Western, how to come up with ways to solve those. So we recognize that that is a huge component of it, and we are actively working on that.
We've talked about getting data as a part of this, and I know that it's premature for that because we just started the registration process. But do you anticipate that as we get a handle on all the 18,000 registrations that occurred, that we'll, that you'll be able to start running analytics effectively and understanding exactly where things are at? And is that something that's going to happen once everyone's registered? Or do you think it's going to be after everyone's been inspected that we'll get that information?
It'll be a combination of the two. There's many issues, because this is both multifamily rentals all the way down to a single family and everything in between, including...
An ADU is only a small part of that. I recognize that.
Exactly. And when it comes down to these smaller rentals of either a single-family home or two units, you know, there's many of these cases, we're talking about non-conforming uses. So they're actually legal, legally established at a time when zoning allowed it, and so they're grandfathered in. And then you do have illegal dwelling units that were established without permits, and so you may have a single-family home with an illegal unit. And then you have legal accessory dwelling units that went through the process and were legally established. And so there are a number of undocumented, non-conforming uses out there, and there's going to be quite a bit of research necessary to classify all of these, you know, minor iterations of what they truly are. So it's going to be a process. I can't say that it will be completed within the first year. It might be through the three-year process as we conduct the investigations and, you know, as resources permit, that we can, you know, document each and every case.
Steve?
My question is based, I guess, on page 11 of the packet. It says, "Based on the 94 ADUs approved citywide since 95, adoption of the ADU ordinance, expanding the allowance of the ADUs would not result in significant changes to neighborhoods in terms of added mass, bulk, people, cars, and noise." Why in the world do we want to add another layer of ordinances onto an existing ordinance that's not enforced, that nobody has paid attention to it? Why complicate the situation by dumping more legislation on top of an already-broke situation? I guess that's my main position right now, and I just, I'm confused as to what we're doing here. Why is it so important? I think the purpose of ADUs is great. There are some letters in here that mention some great instances. We don't have any idea on dispersion because we don't know where they are. If we've only got 94 recorded, well, of course, someone's going to say, yeah, let's expand this. Let's get more, let's get more ordinances on top of this thing. But I just, I just don't see adding more and more. It's broken. Let's fix it first and then move on from there. That's where I'm coming from.
Anyone else this time? Want to hear from the public? Okay. I think it would be appropriate to hear from the public and then have a more in-depth discussion. So with that, let's open the opportunity for public comment on this topic. I've got a signup sheet. The first person on the list is Dave Stefan, Steven?
Stefan.
Stefan, and then Raymond Isaacson, and then Shannon Maris. So you'll be the first three, and come on down. Remember to state your name and address, and try and keep your comments to three minutes. Three minutes. Give it a shot.
Hi. My name is Dave Stefan. I'm a proud Sunnyland resident at 2711 Grant Street. I, this past September, my, both my parents lived in Bend, Oregon. Mom, Dad is retired. Mom's not yet. They're separated. Dad just moved up and moved into one of these accessory dwellings that are registered and allowed and legit, right across the alleyway from me. It's been such a great experience to have him be able to live right across the alleyway from me and from, and my son as well. As he's close to us, I can keep tabs on him, see how he's doing, and then he can enjoy all the great things about living close to downtown, the walkability, the bikeability, all these things that you guys have mentioned in here as well. My mom's planning on coming up as well, and so I started thinking, hey, wouldn't it be cool to provide another opportunity for her to live on my property? I have a detached garage that has off-street parking and could accommodate something like that. So that's when I kind of became aware of this topic and then realized that attached dwellings are okay, detached are not. And so kind of took more of an interest in the topic. My house doesn't really lend itself to building something off the back of it because of functionality and stuff, but the building instead of what I have would be really great, and I'd like to be able to provide that for her as well and be able to help take care of them into the years. You guys have a great, comprehensive list of all the great things that can come from ADUs, and I'm a real proponent of this. And I think with some smart design and some, you know, kind of collaboration, I think that we can provide this as an opportunity for a lot of people that could use, you know, cheaper housing and yet still be a part of the neighborhood and the community. So thank you for looking into this. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave. Raymond? Nope. Okay. Now, Raymond. So we've got Shannon Maris, and then Lisa Anderson, and then Eric Scott.
My name is Shannon Maris, 1814 Donovan Avenue. I'm also a building designer here in town. So a couple of points I wanted to clarify is that we're talking about detached ADUs because the, it, attached ADUs are already allowed, and so those are being used. So what is being requested of me from clients are detached. So a couple of things are happening that I have found, I have clients who are wanting to build for the future, and so they're doing a structure now, an accessory building or a garage, trying to think of the future. And right now, the rules aren't in place for us to be able to do that. The setbacks are different for an accessory building as they are for an accessory dwelling, the same with a garage. So it's kind of hard to help them plan for the future when those things aren't aligned. So if we could take a look at that, that would be wonderful. My other concern is to make sure there's just adequate input from the public, and I've noticed there's several different, my eyes are on it because I'm a designer, but the general public is really busy, and I acknowledge that, and it's difficult for them. So the next-door site has been helpful for me. I hope you're aware of that. Eric Osterkamp, the officer...
Community police officer?
Yeah. Yeah, Officer Eric posts on there. So that's been really helpful for all the neighborhoods, and it can go to specific neighborhoods, or it can go to all the neighborhoods. So that's a valuable resource. The Herald, the email, and I would also like to use the neighborhood groups. I'm from the Happy Valley, and we have a very active neighborhood group, so that's a way to get information out. So I'd encourage that. It would also help us to get the conversation going with our neighbors. So that could be a strength. The other, some things that I've seen is percentage of lot size. I'd like to advocate to not less than that. I've seen examples where there's two buildings on a single-family lot, and there's just no green space left, whether it be a huge garage, or a small house, or one or the other out of scale. So that would help keep the character of the neighborhood. I've had a couple of people contact me and say that owner occupied is very important to them, to keep the quality of the neighborhood, to know that one of the owner -- and I know right now that that's what the laws support, so that's great. The other different, or the other point is that...
About 30 seconds.
Say again?
About 30 seconds.
Great. So any house can be a problem, any rental can be a problem. It's not just ADUs, it's not just detached ADUs. And I also want to stress that we all have the same goals in common, is to keep our quality of life, and to do that most effectively and inclusively. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
Lisa Anderson from the York Neighborhood. I'm the York Neighborhood President, so I'm representing our board. We submitted a couple of letters to you, but I just want to make a couple additional points and kind of hit home some very important areas. First of all, we're not against ADUs. We've had a lot of conversations, a lot of conversations with our neighbors and residents, and there's a lot of support for owner-occupied, attached ADUs. That's not the issue. But what we are asking is for a delay for this process. The reality is, is that we have 90-some legal ADUs. We will all, I think, admit we have many more than that. What we really need to know is how many illegal dwelling units we currently have. We need to complete the rental registration process, and through that, hopefully give a little time to analyze, how many units do we really have out there? From then, let's identify, are they owner-occupied, are they not? And then kind of separate that out. Of the owner-occupied, let's look at them for, do they meet the safety standards? If so, then what can we do to help bring them into compliance to be legal? Then we're going to have a realistic number, so we can identify things like dispersion, so that we're not in a situation that the areas that cluster around the university has an unfair level, which does put strain on our infrastructure, and it does impact the quality of the neighborhood for the residents who are there, who don't necessarily want to live in a very congested area. We do want green space, we do want to have the ability to have parking when we have guests. And until we identify some of that, it's just really premature to start looking at things like, how much space do we use? Do we allow detached? Are they only going to be owner-occupied? Are they attached? How many do we have clustered in an area? We just really can't make that determination until we know what we have. So I think it's kind of like putting the cart before the horse. And then let's all really be realistic, there has been no enforcement, and it's been, the position has been, someone like me or a board has to go forward, file the complaint, and pursue it. And some of us have, and we don't ever hear the outcome of it. So, you know, the responsibility has to be on the city to identify how we're going to go forward to continue this measurement of making sure that whatever rules we have are actually going to be supported and enforced. And until those questions are answered, again, it's just really too premature to be working on this with any real earnest effort to go forward and make something better.
30 seconds.
Realistically, we all want to be able to have our, you know, maybe family come and age with us, or maybe have additional income. And those are great opportunities, but we really need to identify and address a lot of these issues that have been hanging out there before we can go forward and really make a positive impact, so that we don't have this bad relationship over the long term of saying, we're just continuing to kick the can down and continue our mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Eric Scott, and then Mona Leishshire, I'm sorry, and Ike Bancroft.
Hello, Eric Scott from Burchwood Neighborhood. As far as building ADUs, developers are running out of land to basically build their investments, so now they're turning their sights on some of our working-class neighborhoods. And they are more of the working-class neighborhoods, where most of us only own one home. We don't have many vacation homes and other rentals. They're not talking about doing much out on Lake Wacom, for instance. ADUs can greatly detract from a neighborhood. They devalue their neighbors' homes, and their hard work, and their responsible living. Most are not for family, most are just simply a financial investment. And for that, it's not about affordable housing. As a financial investment, they will try to maximize their profit. That's the name of the game, minimize your expense, maximize your profit. So they will maximize the rent as much as they can. The city does benefit from packing more people in, yet they still allow new development. So all of the infrastructure allowed for, you know, new development still goes on. We still subsidize new development. The environmental benefits of infill are not true. That seems to be intentionally misleading. It does not prevent sprawl in the county, it actually puts more pressure out in the county to bulldoze the farms and forests. As people move out of their neighborhoods from disgust, from what it's become, a lot of people are coming up here from Seattle because of what has happened in their neighborhoods. The property owner needs to pay for the relocation cost for the tenant of an illegal ADU. So that should be the, that should not be questioned. Who pays for that? And the neighbors should be compensated for that. As it was their neighborhood, the noise, the parking, if you have three new residents in an ADU, you have to expect three new vehicles. You can't assume that if you're near a bus line, they're not going to have a vehicle. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Mona? And then Ike?
Hi, good evening. I'm Mona Leishner. I live at 2821 Ellis Street in the Sunnyland Neighborhood. I spoke back in March, when you had a planning commission meeting then. My original interest in the whole ADU idea was on a personal level. We own some property in the Broadway Park neighborhood. But since that time, I'm a real proponent for it, for a number of reasons, whether or not I had a property with that potential or not. When I heard Stefan talking, that hit home right away for me, in that, I mean, I'm looking in the mirror, I'm not getting any younger. I have an 87-year-old dad, I have an 84-year-old mother who just had a stroke. I think the idea of aging with dignity and well-being is huge, and independence as long as possible. I mean, it just hits my heart big. And so to allow that, to have that independence, yet have a caretaking scenario is big. And if you look at the Portland survey, right now, they're not seeing ADUs used that much in that sense yet, but they also talk about over the next 20 years, and all the baby boomers, and what's happening. And if you, I mean, for me, I would prefer not to age in a nursing home, and I don't want my parents to have a curtain and soft food. I would prefer not for them. I would prefer well-being versus safety and survival. I just, that is more important to me, in quality of life. But beyond that, I know there's concerns about parking, parking, parking. I think it's a valid concern, but I also think it should be looked at on an individual, parcel, neighborhood basis. In not every situation, and not every scenario, is having an accessory dwelling unit going to be problematic if there's not an extra stall. Sometimes, it sure could be a problem, but there's a lot of times where it's not going to be. So let's look at that, and use common sense, and visit it that way, instead of black-and-white, you know, bureaucracy it. So, and if you look at the idea of it ruining the single-family resident neighborhood feel, I just, again, if you look at some of Portland and their survey, if you Google the Portland survey, there's really a lot of good information on that.
About 30 seconds.
But they say that at this point, they subsidize ADUs down there, by the way. They waive the permit fees and everything. They say they are still generally rare. So it's not, not everybody has the resources to develop an ADU, not everybody wants a rental on their property. There's a load of reasons why not everybody is going to start developing them. I don't see that as, if you look at studies, it's not the problem. And the last thing, if I could just mention, sorry, let me find it. I had one other little bit. Anyway, I have a lot of good notes here.
Thank you. And you'll have more opportunity to comment on this.
Yeah, thanks, I would love more opportunity.
So Ike Bancroft? Do we have an Ike Bancroft? Okay. So the next three speakers are Lee First, Ryan Peterson, and Nancy Davis. So come on up, Lee.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. My name is Lee First, and I live in the Columbia Neighborhood. I have lived in Bellingham for almost 40 years without a car. And, you know, all this conversation about cars, kind of, I think it's going to be passe at some point. My neighbor has six cars, and I have zero. So, but this is what I'm prepared to say. There are a lot of people who are looking for walkable, bikeable, car-free living options. This is a logical way to save energy, decrease traffic, and save our farmlands and working forests from being developed. If we don't encourage this kind of infill, we'll see more traffic, more stormwater pollution, more, you know, more pollution, basically, of air and water. I'm in favor of updating the ordinance so that detached ADUs will be allowed in Bellingham's neighborhoods, and I want to have, to be able to have more than 20 per neighborhood. I want the city, I think the city needs to encourage this, and they need to allow more flexibility in the new ordinance. I have a very small house, and it has a hip roof. So now, if I, I actually have a design to build an ADU, but because of my hip roof and the small size of my house, it's basically impossible to do it. It would be the ugliest house in the Columbia Neighborhood if I did it. And I've been told that, and the other thing about the Columbia Neighborhood is, there's almost every house has an outbuilding with a shed roof, and almost all the homes have gable roofs. So, yeah, and the outbuildings have gable roofs, too. So if I added an ADU and made a hip roof, my house would look like one of the big houses up in Barkley, and it would be the, it would be the ugliest house in the Columbia Neighborhood by far. So that's basically it. I really hope that the rules change, so that we can have detached ADUs in town. Thanks.
Thank you, Lee. Ryan?
My name's Ryan Peterson. I'm a designer in Wacom County. I don't have this statistic with me, but it kind of, like, kind of came to mind. I remember, Bellingham, the house, the income disparity and the cost of housing, it's one of the higher, it's on the higher end of the scale, rather than the lower. And in any way to provide affordable housing, and ways for current owners to age in place, and that's what my client's wanting to do, is age in place. And so I'm just going to read the letter that I wrote. And, all right. Dear Commissioners, my name is Ryan Peterson, and planners also. And, oh, I understood that, all right. I like the way the code is evolving. For the most part, it's looking at parking, open space, and housing affordability in an environmentally friendly, yet growth-conducive way. And we are experiencing growth right now. I mean, whether or not we have the code adapt to it. I'm currently working on a garden court that utilizes the infill housing toolkit approved earlier this year. I have a client that, on a lot, zoned residential multi-duplex that allows for conversion of detached accessory buildings to dwelling units with a conditional use permit approval. I mean, it's already written in there a little bit, but a conditional use permit's a very complex process, or it's a lot of hoops. It's only feasible for them if the code allows the additional parking space required to be placed in tandem with the existing parking. Currently, it doesn't. The existing auxiliary dwelling unit code would require that her current residents be attached to the auxiliary dwelling unit. I understand that the city is reviewing the ADU code. I ask that you consider some tandem parking in certain situations deemed appropriate. I think we've heard an expression of people asking for flexible requirements, or looking at each parcel individually. I think that's a really interesting idea. The infill toolkit has already somewhat addressed this. I got excited when I was reading through the toolkit. Page nine says, and I quote, "Tandem parking is allowed, maybe exterior, interior," end quote. But that's only for a small house. Why? I was hoping to use the detached auxiliary dwelling unit portion of the infill toolkit for this project. Maybe it was an oversight not to include the tandem parking in more of the definitions. One planner at the permit desk told me I had a good chance of having the parking at this site, looking at it as a detached auxiliary dwelling unit now, utilize tandem parking. But when I met with Chris, he felt that the code definitions were not to be interpreted that way. I ask that you consider adding tandem parking, the tandem parking exception allowed to the small house, to other infill definitions, specifically the detached auxiliary dwelling unit portion.
About 30 seconds, Ryan.
If it's going to be an owner-occupied detached auxiliary dwelling unit, and they're going to supply the code-required parking, I think they should be able to do it in any reasonable way. This is my client's retirement plan. It seems that the code is reaching a little from both sides to allow for this project to go through, and any suggestions that you may have, I would be more than grateful for. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Davis?
Hi, I'm Nancy Davis, and I live at 131 South Forest Street. And thank you for letting me speak. We've had problems with unenforced ADUs in our area. We live right near Western, and there are many, many illegal ADUs, or I should say, non-permitted ADUs in our area, and it's caused a lot of congestion. We have parking issues, parking, parking, parking issues. And I agree with Lisa. I think you should go through all of this before you make a decision on what to do about accessory dwelling units totally. I mean, it's a great idea, if it's done correctly, in the right areas. Not all areas are good for ADUs. We actually have a non-permitted one right across the street from us, and they're selling it now, and advertising it. And that has been corrected in the last couple of weeks. But it's just, it just depends on the area. I will say, though, for detached units, it's a little more problematic, because I think when it comes to the environment, you're having more of environmental issues with detached units. I'm certainly for attached units in the right place. But again, I want to just reiterate, I was really in agreement with Lisa's plan to go ahead and find out all the ins and outs of what's going to happen in these areas, and all the problems that can occur before the fact, rather than after the fact. Thank you.
Thank you. Louise? Lynn Allison, and Michael Taylor, and I can't read the last name, but we'll get there in a minute.
Hi, my name's Harry Allison, not Lynn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I live at 213 South Forest in Bellingham, and I would just real quickly like to echo what Mr. Crook said to say, is, why in the world, if we have existing issues in this area, would we want to compound it with more issues? Resolve what we have first, and then talk about an additional. And in the handout, there's quite a bit of... And in the handout, there's quite a bit of verbiage, but it says the South Hill neighborhood has seen the largest number of ADUs approved, and each has provided the required amount of parking. That's not, not the case. There is a couple that I can think of right off the top of my head that have not provided the parking as specified in the ordinance. And there was another comment made about the financial benefit to ADU owners. And that's probably true, but it's sometimes, and more often, at the expense of the neighbors that are living there that don't have ADUs. So just think about not compounding the issue until you've resolved what you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Louise?
Hi, thank you. When this came before the City Council, I am in the 90s, we said yes to the attached ADUs, but no to the detached ADUs. Because of the large amount of comments that we got from people, some who had moved from other communities, and they had horror stories of all the impacts that had happened in their towns. And so we listened to that. They also had good pictures. We listened to that and decided, especially in areas where there's narrow lots, there's a huge impact on the, with detached ADUs. So if you happen to be the unfortunate neighbor, you're the one that's impacted, whether it's loss of green space, loss of sunshine, more noise, loss of parking in the area. It's a big impact with narrow lots. If you were previously living in a single-family neighborhood, and all of a sudden the rules changed, and now all of a sudden, after you put your life savings into that home, the rules change, that doesn't seem to be very fair. But this will only happen in the older neighborhoods, not in the newer neighborhoods that have covenants against it. And the city's never really looked at which neighborhoods have covenants. But I've talked to people who live in those neighborhoods, and they said, well, that'll never happen there. Single-family zoning should mean single-family. Now, we have lots of multifamily areas, and the new areas also allow detached ADUs. So let's look and see how that works. I don't think we need to put that kind of impact on our older neighbor, single-family neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. So we've got Michael Taylor, and then it looks like Ray? Ray? Ray Connors, I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time with that one. Is there a Michael Taylor? A Ray? Anyone else sign up who hasn't spoken? And if you haven't signed up, you can still come up and speak. Yeah, definitely. So if there's anybody else who'd like to speak, David, I see you're interested, just go ahead and line up here on the side over here, and then just come up one at a time.
Hi, my name's David Cunningham from the Birchwood neighborhood. I've just got a couple of quick comments. Thirty-five years ago, I was on the Monterey City Planning Commission. We developed one of the first ADU ordinances down there. And one of the things we decided against was detached ADUs because of the problems that it created in terms of you get a different clientele in the detached generally when they're not being used for family members. We did call our ordinance the granny unit ordinance for partly simply to make sure that the intent of the ordinance was recognized by the people who were creating these units. And I'm all for people being able to take care of their parents as they age, or myself have my kids take care of me as I age. My brother spent three years down in Arizona, living on my parents' property, taking care of them until they passed. So I really recognize that as a very valuable part of the ADU ordinance. But the two things that I think are really critical is, number one, how does it change the character of the neighborhood? And I think detached ADUs change the character in a significant way more than the attached ADUs. So I think that's one of the things to consider. But the other thing is enforcement. And we don't, as many people have pointed out, we don't in the city of Bellingham now have enough information to know how many actual ADUs there are in the various different neighborhoods. Let's say we just said, okay, let's have some more ADUs, and we are saying that there's a limit to 20 in each neighborhood, I believe is what the number is. If you have those, you've developed those 20, and then you discover there are another 30 illegal or unpermitted ones, now you have more than twice as many ADUs in that neighborhood as you should, as you're really supposed to have. And I think we really need to make sure we know where those unpermitted, unlicensed, illegal units are before we start even approaching the limit of 20 per neighborhood for legal ADUs. So I really think that enforcement and knowledge about how many units we actually have are some of the most important parts of developing this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tom Scott with the York Neighborhood Association. I'm on the board there. And I was hoping we could turn on the map that was displayed earlier. Very good, and let's see. Let's see if we can zoom in on that a little bit. It's not doing it the way I thought it would. Oh, well, obviously the B. In the middle here, you can see the York neighborhood, this kind of yellow patch here in the middle. And this one's, you can see the dots of approved, or whatever that are, it said approved, or whatever the term was, accepted, accessory dwelling units. This one right here is actually outside of the York neighborhood, but you can see that there are three blocks here indicating that there are three approved ADUs within the York neighborhood area. But if you look about where the cursor is right now, let's see, that's the, right here, sorry, yeah, right where the cursor is now, that is, let's see, Grant Street, and then here's Franklin, and in between is the alleyway, and there are three ADUs right there that are not on the map. And that's just a small illustration of what's going on. And if you expand that by all the number of alleys and so forth within, then you're going to find an awful lot more than just three ADUs there. I'm sure we're probably pretty close to the 20 already at a minimum. One of those within that alleyway had the parking removed a few years ago when someone decided they didn't need parking, so they put up raised beds there, and now the current tenants park in the alley next to them, obstructing the alley quite often. Or they did last year. This year, they haven't done that yet. Let's see. So anyway, obviously, there's a lot of, or I should say, a lack of knowledge. The gentleman was mentioning before, Lisa mentioned as well, and others. And so, you know, we need to get the blindfold off before we start painting on this. It's great in art school, but not so cool here probably for something we're going to have to live with for decades, century. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dan Welch, 2930 Birchwood Avenue. I own Bundle Design Studio here in Bellingham, a small residential design firm. I'm, I want to talk specifically about, you know, get to the meat of what this is actually about. Right now, ADUs are completely approved and legal across almost every neighborhood in Bellingham, I think every neighborhood in Bellingham. What we're specifically talking about here is a typology thing. It's not about a specific, you know, allowance or not allowing ADUs in general. So the discussions around parking, the discussions around density, the discussions around, you know, architectural form, it's a typology issue. It's not specifically talking about a lot of the secondary issues that would come in the form of ADUs. I'm a huge proponent of detached ADUs. And the reason I'm a huge proponent of detached ADUs is, as Lee mentioned, we have a historical neighborhood, and it has a specific typology and relationship to buildings that happen almost across all of our historical neighborhoods, and that is small houses with a detached outbuilding. Trying to add an ADU attached onto a lot of these Bellingham bungalows is not an easy task. As Lee mentioned, she has a little, you know, thousand-square-foot bungalow with a hip roof. Trying to keep the parking requirement as well as add an ADU on top of that is a huge undertaking that is nearly impossible. So I'm a huge proponent of detached ADUs because it gives designers, architects, and homeowners, if they're designing their own, more tools in their toolkit to keep within neighborhood character and not damage neighborhood character. And the reason that it's possible with that extra, you know, toolkit is now we stick with the typology that's already developed. Small little houses on the front, a detached outbuilding on the back. And, you know, unless we're talking about something like contemporary suburban development like in Barkley, we're talking about historical neighborhoods and trying to keep the character. Adding detached ADUs to that toolkit will actually help preserve neighborhood character, not detach from it. Secondly, along the lines of trying to track down all the illegal ADUs, illegal ADUs are illegal for a specific reason, they're illegal, they're against code. Trying to go on a witch hunt to track down every single illegal ADU is going to be impossible because people develop those properties with the intent of being illegal.
About 30 seconds. Yeah.
I don't think that that's going to be a useful use of our time. I don't think it'll, it'll help at all. And specifically to Mr. Crook's comments, I see it in the inverse of the way that you described. Right now, I see as a designer, loads and loads and loads of regulations that all of my clients come and ask me to do a specific thing, but because of the piles of regulations, I cannot fulfill their requirements to provide quality housing and quality buildings within historical neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Could someone please put up Birchwood for me on here? I'm not really sure where it is in here. Thank you.
I didn't get it. I'll get it in a minute.
I know it is.
It's northwest right there.
So these represent where ADUs are permitted?
Are permitted.
Are permitted.
Yep.
It doesn't show where they currently are?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to verify that I'm reading this right. Hi, everyone, my name is Lynn Barton. I live on Cherrywood Avenue in the Birchwood neighborhood. And hey, I'm being affected by a detached ADU process that's quite flawed. And I'm going to take this discussion from the viewpoint of someone who lives adjacent to an ADU that basically has been reversed in the process, where the old house is still being lived in with the intention of turning it into an ADU while the new house has been built, it's almost completed. And the new house has totally taken all my light out of my backyard. I've been here 10 years. It's been very strenuous dealing with this process for us. And now the owner was thinking about keeping his two-bedroom, two-bath home rather than downsizing it to 800 square feet. So after he already has built the house, and he's already gone through the process of getting what he wanted, he wanted to go through the CUP process and keep what he originally had. So this is really problematic. It's very stressful. All three buildings do not look the same. He's got his old house, a garage workshop in his new home. His new home is two stories. It's directly kitty-cornered to my own home. And as I mentioned, all of my southern and, a lot of my southern and south, all of my southwest light is gone as of 1:30, 2:30 in the afternoon in the winter. You know, that's kind of the big thing here, but the real deal here is that concurrently, and I mean this for you two, planning department, as well as planning commission, what needs to really be happening here is that the adjoining lots where these go in have got to be considered. I'm furious with this. I cried for three months, every day, over this because we were not considered. I found out about this construction the day they broke ground. Can you believe that? You saw what's going on here. I'm going to take this and let you all see it, too. Because the thing is this, it's a matter of process, right? And they reversed the process, and we, being adjoining neighbors, were left out. They can see four, in this two-story complex in the back of our, I'm sorry, from the second story, they can see four lots over in other people's yards. I've got a five-foot setback on the two-story. I've got a 50-foot wide lot. It's more than half the width of my lot.
About 30 seconds.
What we're looking at. Thank you. So my point is, please concurrently, take a look at what the impacts are on the adjoining lots with regard to bulk and scale of the buildings, about solar, and about discussion and being able to mitigate. I would have been fine with this if it had been 12 feet farther back, but it isn't. And I've got to live with it or move. And I'm hearing this from a lot of different people that are going through this. So we're really being neglected, and it really has to happen concurrently. This has to be solved before you move forward. So I ask you to please look at, you know, what the impacts are. And I would like you to wait before you go any farther on this because people are suffering, and they have no way to deal with it. And then the last thing I want to say is, I've got a letter here from Ed Satushak, who lives on my block, who could not make it tonight, so I'm submitting this for the record. And what I'm circulating here will be submitted to the record, but I'd like the rest of the people here to look at it. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the planning department. You work so hard. And I know this is just one more thing you've got to deal with, but I'm sorry, it really has to be done, okay? And I'm happy to help you out as best I can with a smile and as much grace as I can muster. Thank you.
Thank you. And for everyone's benefit, the record, I'm assuming Greg will be left wide open as we move forward in this process. So written comment, anything you want to contribute moving forward, please, please do. We get copied on everything from our staff, and we read everything, so please continue to comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Dick?
Dick Conneboy on South 46th Street here in Bellingham. I want to point out that even the people who spoke about slowing this process down, which is what I'm hearing from those who are so-called against it, they're not against the ADUs. It's just the way we're going about this, and we don't need to go about it this quickly. And as far as the current inventory of ADUs, that hasn't changed one iota in the last five or six years. Nicole Oliver, who used to be with the planning department, in response to a question when we were talking about the infill toolkit many years back, said there were 102 registered ADUs, and the entire audience, plus the city council, broke out in laughter because they knew that that wasn't true, that there were many more ADUs. And until we find out how many of those are out there, we can't tell what the current density is. And we don't even know what the current density of our neighborhoods is because we fill up these single-family homes with five, six, seven, eight, 10 people. And so when they come, the American Community Survey comes out and says our density is 2.2 per dwelling unit, that's a lot of nonsense. I want to say something also about enforcement because we hear that the adverse effects of this increased density will be mitigated in the future because we'll have some enforcement. Well, right now, if you call about noise, you know where your priority is on the police scanner. It's way down at the bottom. If they get there, maybe they'll take care of you. Parking, same thing. And that's during the week, you've got four or five parking control folks, and they may or may not get out there. And if it's the weekend, forget about it. They aren't going to be anywhere around because they don't work on weekends. Litter. The current litter control officer, I just learned, has a backlog of hundreds of calls about litter and can't even handle those at the moment. And lastly, affordability. I have not heard a single figure about what the affordability is of these
We've had some really benign issues over the past couple of months after the comp plan, growth, capacity discussion. And so, it's nice to get feedback from the public and know that you guys are all participating, and I encourage you to continue to do that. So, thank you very much. And I think we can move into our discussion at this point, we could take a quick break if, if anyone up here feels like they need a quick break. Nope, okay. Well, I think that it would be a good time for the commission to have a discussion. And, you know, like Greg said, this is kind of our opportunity to air thoughts for the benefit of staff so that they can take those forward. So I encourage all of you up here to, you know, contribute your thoughts, this is our chance. So with that, let's open it up. Steve?
Yeah, first of all, thank you, everybody came out. It's, it's great to see a lot of different thoughts on this subject. Tonight, we went about two to one on yeses over no's. It's not that black and white, there's a lot of phasing in there that, that has to be appreciated. Also, I'd like to welcome our newest city council member, Ms. April Barker, she's here tonight. She's attended a lot of our meetings, and I want to acknowledge you, thank you.
I, I think there was one comment that really struck me tonight, and that was by, I believe, our last speaker, I've got her name down here, Lynn Barton, with her pictures. And I think when we get to a place in time, hopefully, looking at the surrounding properties of a potential detached ADA is huge. You've got to, you've got to blend in, you can't overpower a neighbor either left or right, behind or ahead of, of any type of, of housing. And I think that's a real, real threat or a danger to, to private property. And I think that thing really has to be looked at at some point in time. Thank you.
I have a question for you, if that's okay? Because I've thought about that issue as well. Do you see, do you think, think of that issue in terms of regulations that would, you know, the woman who spoke said if it had been twelve feet further away, it wouldn't have been a big problem? Like, like addressing that through setbacks and height limitations and like that, or addressing it through allowing those neighbors to participate in the permit process through notice or, or something like that? Because they're two different ideas.
I, I think we've got to, there's got to be a process included, whether it be five hundred feet or a thousand feet in the neighborhood, so they can address the, the related issues of parking, and how big the, the structure's going to be, and how it's going to impact their particular property. I, I just don't think you can go in with an application and a drawing on lot number one, two, three, and say, this is what I want to do in the backyard, here's the water utility and everything else, and discount the immediate neighbors. I mean, that's, that's huge. That's really huge, and it should, should work in with the neighborhood character as to design and things like that. To see somebody's private property downgraded, and that's what it does, is, is really, is really something very significant.
Thank you. Anybody else? Phyllis?
I, I have very little voice tonight, but I'd ask, I'd like to ask staff, Chris, how is this normally handled? I mean, this person was obviously surprised by this monolith that went in next door, but how, how, how did that happen?
I think, if, if, this is the case that I am aware of, this is a very, very rare circumstance where somebody came in for a building permit to build a single-family home on the back of a lot that had an existing home on, with intent to demolish the home up front. And so, they are building the single-family home within the limits of single-family development. With that building permit, they obtained a security, a financial security, to guarantee that the home on the front would be demolished upon completion of the home in the back. And upon completing that home in the back, they're finding that they actually want to keep the home in the front somehow. And the code doesn't currently allow it. And so, there are, it's being dealt with at this time, and that's, if, if this is the one that I'm aware of, that's, that's the circumstances. So, that I know of, the home in the front currently is required to be demolished.
So this is the one we've talked about before, I think. I think it came up in conversation, and...
I'm sorry, it's downsized, not demolished.
So this is not an accessory dwelling issue?
That, it didn't begin as an accessory dwelling issue, because my understanding is it's a single-family home, so you, I mean, it's a single-family neighborhood, so you cannot have a sec, a detached ADU. So if it's to be downsized, if that was the intent, then it was going to be downsized to become an accessory building, and, you know, whatever cooking facility is removed, whatever, so that it becomes some type of a storage building, shop, art studio, whatever. But the code allows detached accessory buildings up to eight hundred square feet. It, it allows a single-family home with a thirty-five-foot height limit, which easily accommodates three stories, and fifty-five hundred square feet, with nothing but a building permit. If you go above fifty-five hundred square feet, you're required a conditional use permit. So, this originally was intended to be a single-family home.
Got it, yeah. On the accessory dwelling units, does the city take any consideration into looking at the site and thinking about the effect it's going to have on the neighbors? I'm particularly thinking of the adjacent neighbors. I mean, are these things looked at in individual, or they just looked at on a sheet of paper when the people come in here, or do they physically go to the site and look? I'm kind of curious as to how this process works.
No, we, we, we take a, a look at, we have a, a really good inventory of aerial photos, we will go out and do site visits. We can see, based on the plans, where the proposed, if it's a detached accessory dwelling unit, where it's going to be located on the property, what it's, how it's situated according to adjacent buildings on adjacent property, and what potential impacts will be. And so, we can address potential impacts. But if they are staying within the regulations, not asking for anything unusual, generally, it will be approved. You have, you know, five-foot setback from side yard, that's what the neighbor has also.
Are we getting very many complaints from recent accessory dwelling units that are built per code? Or is, are we looking at things that seems like lurking in the background of all this is all the illegal ones that we have back there? And I just want to make sure we're not tainting the thinking now with that stuff that needs to be cleaned up. So how are we doing now? I mean, in, in things that have been done in the most recent time that are considered legal, are we having, do we have a handle on that? I guess is the question I have.
Yes, that I'm aware of, this is an issue that's being, a lot of the issues are being brought up because of illegal units. The ones that are legal, we do not have many complaints about.
Okay, I think that's a very critical point. Thank you.
Tom, can you?
Kind of like Steve, I, I don't want to pile even more regulations on top of regulations. It seems to me that a lot of this is a result of greedy landlords, I guess. around the college, the university, excuse me. And some of them, I'm sure, have not even done anything other than have that two-car garage door shut. I mean, there's no insulation inside that garage door. And this, this kind of stuff's got to be dealt with. And I'm, I don't know, I don't know how to, to tell people how to deal with it, other than having the Terminator come and stand, stand there and, and shut them down, I guess. And as far as the, the ADU design, et cetera, I, I don't see any possible reason to try to make the design for an ADU, either attached or detached, more rigorous than a single-family residence. If a single-family residence can be fifty-five hundred square feet, three stories, and five feet from the property line, it seems to me what we're talking about is a really bad neighbor. If, if people were more considerate of their neighbors. I, I know, full disclosure, I'm an architect. I'm, I know, I, I try to do projects that will affect the immediate adjoining properties in the least possible hurtful way. Now, I'm, I'm human, and, and I often don't succeed at that, but I try. And I don't know how to legislate something like that either. But, and, and so, I'm, I'm really not worried, but I'm concerned that we think that by writing a few words on a piece of paper, we've solved the problem, when probably that's not the case. I would suggest that responsible designers would show the proximity of neighboring structures so that we could, we, the Planning Department, could make some kind of intelligent guess as to the possible impacts of this proposal. But I, it, it all comes down to being decent people, I guess.
It's a very Scandinavian.
Decent neighbors don't, yeah, decent neighbors don't put a hog-slaughtering plant five feet from the property line.
Thanks, Tom. Jeff, you have a comment?
Well, something along those lines, but not quite the same. It was more that, you know, the example of having somebody build a two-story building right next to somebody else's Rambler, you know, a five-foot setback, that's your basic design issue that comes up in any project, single-family, where you don't have design standards necessarily, and you, anybody has their lot, and it's a private property right to put anything up to a fifty-five hundred square foot house on it, and people do it. And you have a McMansion right in the middle of a historic neighborhood, it's, it happens all the time, there, you can't legislate good taste. But my question, I guess, is an alternative to that, I guess that's one end of the spectrum where somebody has their lot and they have the right to do what they can legally within the laws, versus having everything be a neighborhood design review where you have to get your neighbor's permission and, and approval to do anything with your property, which is another extreme. Is there a, a design review loop that may be applicable that, that covers, I guess, design continuity as well as neighboring impacts that is currently used by the city for anything else? You know, I know there are all these issues like views come up, and, and all these things, even in single-family neighborhoods. Is there a design loop that exists in the city for dealing with some of those concerns that's already in existing practice?
We, we have a, yeah, not, not for single-family, it's never been used for single-family, we have it for multifamily and commercial development.
Infill toolkit.
But infill toolkits, yes, it, it has design standards, but it still doesn't go to the design review board. So, and a lot of these issues that you're talking about is, is dealing with compatibility with adjacent developments, and not just the design of the proposal.
So when you look at design standards with or without a review board, is it primarily looking at the structure with respect to the overall character of field of the neighborhood, or is it actually looking at it specifically towards this building, and not only how it fits with the surrounding structures, but also what the impacts are with the surrounding structures? Is that part of a design review, or is that just not normally part of even multifamily, for example, design review?
No, with, with design review, you look at, you know, in, in this case, you'd be looking at compatibility between the proposed building and the existing single-family home on site. So if you're looking at a detached ADU, so you're looking at compatibility between those two, and then compatibility within the neighborhood. So, that it's not out of character with adjacent developments. Along with that, it's not just design compatibility, but also location of the building on the site to minimize impacts on adjacent property. These are type-two reviews, which requires a public notice, and we receive public comment. And so, neighbors are able to comment on the design of the building and potential impacts, and we will address those to the best of our ability within the limitations of the code.
So just, I'll finish up with this. Is there a logistical or any legislative reason not to consider having a design review loop, like you just described, as part of an ADU process in existing single-family neighborhoods, even though it does not currently apply to single-family neighborhoods? Is that actually a policy option that the city would have in considering ADUs?
Well, that's, that's, what I just described is how we actually review ADUs right now.
Was that part of, oh, I'm sorry, I was trying to track between the infill toolkit and your current single-family zone.
Yes, so, to begin with, the single-family zoning, if you're just going to build a single-family home, not an ADU, there's no design standards. But if you had, if you build an ADU, whether it's attached or detached, there are design standards that apply, and we will review that project according to those design standards. We just don't defer to the design review board for ADUs.
There's no design review permit, right?
It's not a design review permit.
Yeah. I think, just in, in that vein, I'm, I'm a little gun-shy of adding regulations to a process to make it more complex and more expensive than building the home on your, on your property that you own. I mean, Dick brought up affordability, one way to make things really not affordable is to make them really expensive to design and build. And, you know, you already have, as I understand this, our impact, for, just for example, our impact fees are fixed, they're not based on size, so no matter how big of a structure you build, you pay the same impact fee. So you're actually punishing someone for building a smaller house in our community because the impact fee becomes a larger portion of their overall cost of development. And so, a little seven-hundred-square-foot ADU, for example, that has to pay all the impact fees, is paying a much higher percentage of their cost of development than the two-thousand-square-foot home on the neighboring lot. And I think that's a huge issue for affordability and discouraging people from doing this. And there were some comments in here about impact fees, and some of the communities that waived them or incentivized things, and, you know, I mean... that waive them or incentivize things, and, you know, maybe I'm skipping over the should we or shouldn't we have them, but if we're going to talk about having them, I think it's really important to talk about making it affordable for people to build them. And adding like a design review step is really, I mean, a design review permit costs thousands of dollars to apply for, just the permit. And then you have to pay thousands of additional dollars to a designer to meet all the stringent criteria for that, renderings, and you don't have to do that for your house. So I'm a little bit gun-shy of that issue, and I think we should all be thinking, and the staff should be thinking about the affordability of the process when we talk about these things, and, you know, making it, if we can establish rules that we can all agree on, making it easy for people to do this, once we've established what the parameters are that we can work with, then.
Well, that's a good point. I was not thinking of multi-thousand-dollar review processes, and maybe it would be, maybe it wouldn't be, but you have to decide who arbitrates good taste and function, and the question is, is it something that the neighbors do through comment on a public hearing process, or the hearing examiner does it, or the planning director does it? Or are there rules that are written down that everybody knows are transparent, and they apply? Somebody's got to figure out what that interface is, and it can be whatever it is, but we need to figure that out.
And I agree with that, and the current process where you send out notice, I think is that, I'm not suggesting that we would remove that opportunity for neighbors to know about it and comment on it, but I personally like the idea of establishing standards, and I think that was commented on in this matrix too, that everyone can agree on. And then we all know the ballfield we're playing on, and we, designers can go out and design within that ballfield. I'm also very hesitant of asking my immediate neighbor, you know, for their weighted opinion on something, because what if you don't get along with your neighbor? What if your neighbor just doesn't like ADUs, like some of the people who've spoken here have said, "We just don't like them, period"? Then you create this unfair dynamic where your ability to succeed with this city-wide regulation is overly influenced by one or two individuals. So, me personally, on that topic, I made some notes on it, I think having standards is important, but I prefer the other way, which is, let's set rules that we all agree on, six-foot setback, 10-foot setback, 25-foot height limit, and then, you know, you shouldn't need to tell me if I need a shed roof or a gable roof with, as long as I'm under 25 feet. That's where I approach this from. It's just, you know, that's just my thought on that topic.
Thanks. Two specific, I guess, criteria, going to what Ali was saying about coming up with the, you know, design standards or standards for this ordinance that we can all agree on. Two that kind of jump out at me is, one, detached ADUs being allowed in single-family neighborhoods. I think they should be allowed in single-family neighborhoods. I've done a lot of driving through our neighborhoods and looking at various opportunity sites for where these things could go and how they could shape. I think a big, for me, important amenity to have is an alley access. So if you have a, you know, bungalow-style house in the front, you have a detached ADU in the back, they have their own access off the alley, I think that can work to improve a lot of conditions in alleys. As you go through town, you see a lot of chicken coop sheds, you know, trash receptacles that are in alleys, they're not well-maintained. I think with proper lighting and access and parking off the alleys, I think our alleys can be improved, and I think we could fit additional units in our city without having a major impact to the existing street frontage and streetscape. So I think detached ADUs in a single-family where you have alley access is appropriate. The second is detached ADUs, the owner-occupied provision in multifamily. Right now, in a multifamily zoning district, a detached ADU is permissible use through the infill toolkit. However, there is still a owner-occupied provision, and to me, that doesn't make sense in a multifamily designation. The intent of multifamily is not to have only owner-occupied residences. So if an ADU is permitted in a multifamily zone, there should not be an owner-occupied provision associated with it. It's not the highest and best use of the land, and it promotes demolition of existing structures. If somebody has a duplex lot with a single-family home on it, they have two options if they want to expand the use of that. One is tear it down and build a duplex, or the second is to add another unit, which right now is not permissible under code because they would have to be owner-occupied to do that. So we're losing infill opportunity there in already appropriately-zoned areas. So those are my two specifics. And then just generally, you know, this is a tricky ordinance, because you're in existing established neighborhoods. This is a unique set of circumstances, we have to have a unique ordinance to make this thing work properly. There has to be some level of neighborhood consideration for existing neighborhoods, and there still has to be predictability in the process for designers as well. I'm a proponent for education over regulation. And a couple ideas were floated around about maybe a special designation that a designer or an architect has to have, an accreditation, to be able to do infill design within the city of Bellingham. A class, an educational course that they have to take that teaches about, you know, being considerate to neighboring scale, mass, that they could, you know, take, get that accreditation, and then they're licensed to do those kinds of designs, and would trust in their professional experience to do what's right.
Interesting ideas.
Okay.
Just a real quick comment on that, Garrett. I hadn't thought about owner occupancy issues in multifamily, I think that's a really good point. And I have actually professionally run into that exact situation, where a client of mine chose to tear down an existing single-family home and build a duplex on the property, because they couldn't build a detached structure that could be rented on the back in a multifamily zone. And so we lost a single-family home, and they built a duplex, which in my opinion didn't look as nice. And so that's a very true statement. On the flip side, I think owner occupancy is really critical in the single-family neighborhoods, and we've heard that from the public, and I'm like 100% a proponent of that concept, and I think that is critical, because otherwise you do generate the greedy landlord scenario that Tom brought up. And so I think that's an important, in my opinion, a critical element, we've had a lot of comment on it. Lastly, on the alley access issue, I think that's also a key point. I don't know if we ultimately draw the line at neighborhoods that have alleys versus ones that don't for detached ADUs, but it's definitely a good discussion topic, because when you access off the alley, it totally changes the impact on the neighborhood and the streetscape. And I really appreciated the comment from my fellow Columbia neighborhood resident, Lee, because I live just down the street from her, and I made the effort to drive down every single alley in my neighborhood before this meeting, over the past month or so. And I would say like over 80% of the houses in my neighborhood have a detached accessory structure on the property line on the alley. And I wish I could bring you the video I took driving down these alleys, because they're lined by detached accessory structures. And those structures right now can be unlimited height, as long as they're one story, well, 35 feet, as long as they're one story. So, and a lot of people have big 1,200, 1,500-square-foot structures, and so when you talk about, when you actually drive down alleys and look around, and you think about the change from a detached structure, we have crime in our alleys, if there was someone living there with a window instead of a blank wall, that might help with those kind of issues. And I really think that was a very good, good comment to raise about the dynamic that an alley brings to this discussion from a neighborhood character perspective, versus, say, new curb cuts to put a driveway past your house to get to the back. So I just follow in those comments. Tom?
Yeah. Those were good comments, except for the one about education. I'm too old to learn anything.
A while back, Director Seppeler said that he would come back and address to us the process and the progress in compiling this follow-up on the rental licensing. I would really like to see him come back and address this, where are we in this process? I would like to know what the plan is to start enforcing and finding these illegal ADUs. I'm sure we're not going to have stormtroopers marching down the alleys, but I need to find out where we are. And am I asking for something that's totally impractical, they're not going to get search warrants, but how are we going to go about this process? I would really like to hear where we are on that situation.
That's a good point. A question I have, staff maybe, is, and this is more just a clarification, but you, through this rental registration process, you don't anticipate that you're going to capture all of the illegal accessory dwelling units, right? Because they're illegal because people didn't want to come in. So just because we passed rental registration, I can just see that there's literally hundreds of these people in York and these other neighborhoods who have been acting illegally, they're not going to have a change of heart. So I guess my question is, does the rental registration really get us the data we need on the illegal accessory dwelling units in this community? Or do we have to go out and actively pursue these people? And is that even really a viable idea? You know, we've never done that, we don't have funding for that. Are we going to go knock on every garage door until we get it all? Because, because really, there's going to be a lot of people who just don't report, don't register. How, have you guys been thinking about that? How we're going to, how we're going to deal with that?
It's being discussed, they're coming up with strategies on how to deal with that, what the, where to add at this point, I don't know, but, you know, you bring up a good point. There's, during any period, a rental house, some, somebody that lives there may decide to live in the garage, and it might be for six months.
You don't know.
And then it's gone. And so there's just a number of just random situations, there's just all colors to how this can occur, and how we address that is, it's, like I said, being discussed.
Jeff?
Well, I won't repeat exactly what I said to start with, but I still think we need a handle on that. I just, you're going to have to figure that out before this can go much further. I've driven all the alleys and streets in Bellingham professionally many times, and so I know how obviously, they truly are obvious dwellings, when you spend every week going down the alleys, you know where they are. So I don't think there's a great mystery there. I think the mystery is, what do you do without putting 1,000 people on the street without a home? And, you know, how do you deal with having access to them and documenting them and whatnot? So I'd really like to see a plan for what the timeline is, you know, is this, this isn't going to happen overnight, but is it going to happen in a year? I do think it's separate from the rental registration process to some extent, because I do think these people won't have egress windows, they won't, they know they don't have a hope of getting in compliance. So they'll run it until they get caught, and then they'll stop. So I hope there's a plan, because as I said, this is, it's poison to this conversation on ADUs, and we need to figure it out.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I just, one thought on the, a lot of the challenges I'm hearing about illegal units as funding, lack of ability to enforce, and maybe, we talked about reducing barriers of new AD units and dropping permitting fees, their impact charges should be less, there's less of a, you know, impact fee and system demand charges on where the infrastructure's already there. Maybe there could be a fee per unit that goes specifically towards an enforcement fund. So a new ADU, whether it's, you know, $2,000, goes specifically to a fund that helps with enforcement, and maybe that, as that just starts with letter-writing to targeted properties that are, have been identified as potentially illegal ADUs, that might be enough right there, just to get people's attention. And then start tracking that enforcement, as that fund grows, they could get more aggressive with their approach.
Yeah, we can deputize Steve to be the enforcement guy and go up and down the alleys, and search for them.
No thank.
You sure? It's an unpaid position, just like this one.
Hey, Chris, how, can you give me an estimate on how many single-family homes we have in Bellingham right now? Overall? Like in the thousands, can you give me like a big, rough estimate?
Total?
Total single-family units in town?
Speaker, that number, I don't, I don't have that.
But I mean, we're talking like 20, 30, 40, I mean, do you have any idea? 18, you know? And the reason I ask that is because I think that this, there was a speaker who made a comment about kind of looking forward, and so much of this is, I'm a big proponent of getting the data. I agree with Jeff, I agree with speakers, I think taking our time with this is really important, and understanding where we're at with illegal ADUs is important, but I also think that it's a much bigger issue than that for our community. And there's all these comp plan goals and policies that you talk about in this matrix that we set up. You know, we wrote a story for the community that we wanted to fulfill, and to do that, we have to make choices and implement stuff, and we haven't been great about that, you know? It's maybe half fiction story, half nonfiction story right now, our comp plan. And I feel like, let's say every single neighborhood had 25 illegal ADUs, like the 10 neighborhoods we're talking about, that's only 250. And we have tens of thousands of single-family homes in this community. So even if we sussed all those illegal units out and shut down half of them, put a bunch of people out on the street, and legalized half of them, we're still only talking about, even in a worst-case scenario, I'm guessing a couple hundred, 200, 300, 400 units, and there's so much more capacity in our community, I don't think it's premature to be talking about this. We need the data to make a final decision, but there's no reason, this is just my opinion, as a community, we can't start talking about the details, because we're going to have to get there eventually. And when you look, when you step back from this focus on what's happened in the past, these illegal people, and you start talking about how do we make this a process that works, you said we don't have problems with the legal ones, we can, we can make this work for the whole community and address that, and it's not black and white, one or the other. So I would just suggest that we don't put a stop on this discussion until we get that data, because even when we get the rental registration data, it's not going to be all the data we need. And even if we get the worst possible data out of that, when you step back and look at the whole community, it's still a relatively small chunk of all the homes that would be affected by this accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So I just, I would encourage staff to not just stop, I would encourage you to continue to work on this, come back to us, I want to continue to have discussions on it as we move forward, with or without that data, and I just think it's important.
I agree. The one point I'd make is that even if it's a small percentage of 20,000, if it ends up being that there are 300 or 200, and they're almost all in York, C home, and Leder, it's a disproportionate impact. And so at one point, it's minor, but at the other point, it's not minor at all, so...
That's true.
But I agree, we keep talking, we keep going on this, we figure things out, but I still think we need to get a handle on it.
I agree, there could be areas where we're just maxed out, right? And we need to know that, but we shouldn't stop talking about it. Phyllis?
Well, that was just the point that I was alluding to before, was we've got two issues going on, the illegal ones, which is going to take, is a whole different project than dealing with what we're looking at, setting guidelines for legal units that are coming up. And if there's some way we could entice the ones that are illegal to come to actually upgrade theirs while they're being forgiven, I don't know if that's the word I want to put in there, but you might bring them out and give them an opportunity to bring them up to standard. I don't know if that's possible, some of them certainly not, but I do think, I agree, I think we need to be moving forward with the concept. The illegal ones, the legal ones don't seem to be the issue, it's the illegal ones that I think, I think need to be a separate project.
Chris?
I just want to bring up a notion here, that, you know, if detached ADUs were allowed, you know, there's, again, there's a number of illegal units out there. If they were allowed to come forward, I would guess that a very large number, if not the vast majority, until we get the data, we don't know, but the vast majority of those are not owner-occupied. And so if bringing them into compliance is going to require owner occupancy, and, or abandonment, either you abandon the ADU, you can continue to rent out the home, or you provide owner occupancy and you can keep the ADU. What, would you rather have owner occupancy or continued rental? You know, that's, that's, that's one of the potential trade-offs to look at.
Well, I think, that depends on what the zoning is, the underlying zoning.
Right.
If it's already a multifamily, maybe the owner occupancy is not, you know, important.
Right.
But if it's single-family, we've heard from a lot of people that owner occupancy is pretty important.
Yes. And so that could be, you know, an incentive for the single-family zones to encourage detached ADUs, because the, those that are illegal right now, where both the primary residents and the... primary residence and the second dwelling unit are rented out, to bring it into compliance would require owner occupancy, or you abandon the ADU and it just continues to be a rental. What do you want?
What you're suggesting is that it might actually generate more owner occupancy in some of our single-family neighborhoods.
Yes.
Which is a good thing potentially. So someone might say, this old home is worth buying and living in because I can get a little rental income from my detached ADU versus only an investor buyer looking at the property and saying, well, it's all about cash flow from this thing. It's a rental. It's a rental.
Mm-hmm.
It's an interesting concept. Yeah.
Yeah. Should say, you know, and that sort of thing very well is a good, may be considered a good outcome. So I, that's a great concept. And I think just from what I've heard and kind of head nods, I think there's pretty strong support for owner-occupied as a, you know, fundamental, basic principle. So
I think providing parking and owner occupancy are probably the two things that everyone seems to agree on.
You got to bring in upgrading to code because that's huge.
Yeah.
That that's going to be a backbreaker for a lot of these
And those would be the ones, I think, where Chris is saying those people would just have to abandon it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. There's going to be some tough choices here.
Mm-hmm.
Phyllis?
I was going to say, I like Garrett's idea, though, in a multifamily residential area, that you remove that requirement that the ADU has to be the main, one of the units has to be occupied by the owner. I think that just is counterproductive to the multifamily zoning.
Chris, I have another question. You guys have obviously looked at a lot of other communities, you know, the comments here. Is that information in some consolidated database? Or did you go out and actually kind of like cold-call these planning departments and kind of figure out what they had going on? How did you compile that information?
You just go onto every city and find their ADU ordinance and just see what they allow, what they don't allow. And so it's a matter of just going from city to city to city online, looking at their codes. And so most of that information is compiled into this matrix on, you know, these alternatives, alternative solutions on how to address these concerns. But I'd say go on to our link to the ADU ordinance update. There's a lot of good information there. Provides links to other jurisdictions, then just studies on ADUs and model ordinances and such, articles from AARP and such regarding accessory dwelling units. It's all a lot of good information. And I think somebody, I think it was Ellen, talked about the survey in Portland. And I actually have some statistics that they held a webinar, given information on their ADU ordinance. And I think it'd be pertinent to share some of the findings from that. They did a survey, Portland, Oregon. They allow detached accessory dwelling units, both attached and detached. They allow maximum size of 800 square feet, and they allow the ADU to be up to 40% of the, or up to 80% of the size of the primary residence. Ours limits it to 40%, but again, a maximum size of 800 square feet. They do not require owner occupancy, and they do not require parking. They had a survey that was sent to all ADU owners, 670 in Portland, and they had a response rate of 45%. And what they found from those responses is that 79% of the ADUs are being used as intended. They're being used as accessory dwelling units. They're being rented out. 4.5% are being used as short-term housing, as Airbnbs and stuff like that. And their code does allow Airbnbs, and so they're able to get that data, and it is allowed. Our code does not allow that right now. They report an average of 1.45 occupants per ADU. 65% are occupied by a single person. Again, they do not require owner occupancy, but 70% of the ADUs are owner-occupied.
Seventy?
The owner lives on site. So even though they do not require it, 70% are owner-occupied. 18% are occupied by people 55 and older. And 18% charge no rent for whatever reason. Maybe it's a caretaker that they give free rent to, or it's a family member. So it's just a, it's one of the more thorough studies that have been done on ADUs. And it's, there's a link online at our website that you can listen in on that webinar. It's been recorded.
Thank you, because that's actually why I asked that question, was, you know, we have, you have like code excerpts, so we know what these communities have, but there's no real analysis of how they functioned, like how have these things worked in these communities? And so my question was actually going to be, is there, have you been able to gather data on the function of these programs? And it sounds like that's an example. Are there other communities that you're aware of that have studies? Because, you know, there's, the fear is expressed of mad rush to build these, you know, litter problems, parking problems, three people in each unit, all these things that people have fear of. And I'm really curious to see if there's data out there from other communities that we're looking at as examples that speak to that issue.
Right.
Is that really what's happening in all these other places? Or is it, you know, is it real, or is it sky's falling? Is there anything else other than the Portland study that you're aware of that gives feedback on those kinds of issues?
Not that is as thorough as this and as in-depth as this. One that I missed here is the average rent is $756 per ADU, where the average rent for an apartment is 778. So it's virtually a wash.
Wash. That's expected. Have you heard any, I mean, in your work, have you had any communities that you've looked into or talked to where there's just absolute horror stories about implementation of an ADU ordinance?
No.
Anybody else?
How about not absolute horror stories, but kind of horror stories?
Yeah. Yeah, like poor performance, or anything where they've said this is a bad move after doing it for a certain period of time, or?
Not that I'm aware of. There's always going to be the case of the outlier. You can't choose your neighbors, you know, regardless if it's an ADU or a single-family home. It's, there's just always that chance that you're going to get a bad neighbor.
It seems that one of the factors here, though, is, so when you look at a dataset that includes college towns, what's different about us, or what's different about another town that, you know, not Pullman necessarily, but just, you know, you get someplace where the housing market dynamic is heavily influenced by students? Because, you know, we haven't talked about specifically who we're trying to house in ADUs. Is it seen as a relief out for students? I hope not necessarily. Or is it workforce housing, or housing for people that are retired? You know, you can't, you can't define who's going to be in a house, but you can still keep in mind your overall objectives of who you're trying, what demand you're trying to meet through a particular ordinance. And, you know, that's one of those things where I think there's value in looking at how, what did or didn't work in a city that had a certain predominance of student housing, because that's got to influence this.
That's a good point. Portland's not Bellingham from a student housing perspective. And certainly neighborhoods that are closer to the campus have a greater, have a greater impact on them from the campus than, say, Columbia, for example. Any other comments at this time? Greg, are you looking for any specific direction, or just kind of listening on our discussion and hearing what's interesting to us?
We're just listening and taking notes. We appreciate all of you participating. Thanks to everyone for coming out tonight. It was great to see some new faces tonight. The veterans have been with us for a while. We appreciate them as well, but it's always nice to see some new faces and get new perspectives. As I said, we're going to go ponder all of this information and what we've heard and what we've learned. And at some point, probably in the spring, we'll come back to you with some specific recommendations. And I will get Director Sepler to come in and talk to you about the rental registration program as soon as we can arrange that. Because clearly, you need to know what's going on there, and he's the man. So we'll do that as soon as we can.
Thank you. And that next step will probably be a work session, probably, or?
Yeah, more than likely. Yeah.
Yeah. Just want to assure everyone, I ask because I want to assure everyone we're not rushing to make a recommendation on this. I think, you know, it sounds like we're not even going to get this back in our court for several, at least three months. And then I think we'd all like an opportunity to evaluate what you guys have come up with, not in a voting environment, you know, get a chance to really absorb it. So that would be, that would be good. And that lets everybody else know that you're going to have multiple opportunities probably to comment again. So please continue to participate, and we look forward to hearing more from everybody. And I think with that, we'll close. Just one quick second, if everyone could hang tight, we have no other agenda items, so we're going to wrap the meeting up in the next minute. And if everybody gets up and walks out, it makes it very difficult to do that. So if you could all just be patient for just like one minute, we'll finish the actual meeting. And unless Greg has a really long director's report. So with that, I'd like to close the work session. Is there any old or new business?
How about next meetings?
From staff, is there from the commissioners?
Our calendar?
Upcoming meetings?
Upcoming meetings. We do not have any meetings scheduled for the rest of the year other than the Shoreline meeting in December.
That's not, we're not having a Shoreline meeting, are we?
We're only on 17, but I'm not saying it's not.
We have as much notice as possible, because that's a difficult month.
Yes. Yes. So enjoy the holidays.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy holidays to everyone.
Happy holidays.
Question. Do you have an empty chair?
That's, thank you, Ann. We actually meant to ask Greg about that before the meeting ended. Garrett, do you want to ask the question you asked me?
Yeah, what's the status of interviews? Have you interviewed candidates?
We have not interviewed candidates. The mayor's office is in charge of recruitment of new commissioners, since they are appointed by the mayor. They are looking for not only a planning commissioner, but I think some members of other boards as well. So they're preparing an ad that would go into the newspaper and on the city's website, asking for people to volunteer. So it's probably going to take a little while, but we hope that anyone who's interested will contact the mayor's office. And there are several openings on the number of boards and commissions. And so if you want to get involved, that's a great way to do it. There's an application form that you fill out that you can get from the city's website, or talk to the folks in the mayor's office, and they'll get you taken care of. We hope to have somebody on board by the time we get rolling early next year.
It's a lot of fun. Sign up.
Will we?
Yes. Thanks, Greg. Okay. I think with that, we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone, again.